All right, I've got six thirty with all the board. Please be with us when we go about town business, we've got us, we've directed us. Please allow us to listen to each other and make the best decisions that are best interest of town. In Christ's name, amen.
If you want me to play it legally, please. I play the big conservative flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Get down and may it be him.
I certainly go to advance a thing for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and engaged community.
Thank you. And I would like the South City Vision Statement. South City is a safe, prosperous, environmental community for diversity, innovation, education, drive success, and a globally competitive society. Adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, mayor, there's there are several adjustments under a new second file, we have a copy available to table. We have a new second file with a presentation. The five point, the only five point two, total of three vehicles. Presentation on stormwater, and then Mayor Wes Homelow proposed a five point two. And also they hold this for charter amendment to the second step to the mayor term of evolution importance schedule high. And then, um, you go to C C eight point one, that item needs to be moved into a public area in the best of spirit. And then finally, we're going to a public session. The lay of the table, mutation of things in the city's federal. Eight one one, we've got six point three.
Yeah.
Thank you much for the improvements to me, Jim.
Right. We have a motion, we have a second, and quick, or a judgment. All those papers, these five, saying aye, all those both black signs. Okay. Again, is just.
Thank you much for the improvement, Jim.
Right. All right, we have a motion, we have a second question. All those approved, say aye, all those disapproved, you like the sign. Motion's here. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion to second, approve the consent agenda, discussion question. Okay, now, all those papers, these five, saying aye, all those both black signs. And that motion here. Okay. Those are the comments. We've got signed over. Eli.
Yeah, I'm a private comment.
All right. Okay, further comment, move on, present.
Okay, we're saying five, a four minute long presentation, you know, this is a recap interview for a safety meeting. And our always pleased, certain reasons, kind of, looking forward. Commissioner's heard a presentation from the urban citizens with Sandra Cole finding. For thirty two thousand five hundred to conclude the annual health and strategic action plan that we're currently working on with the government too. After we issue Commissioner's stat base, Sandra Cole files, he recommends that the four new contracts include gathering agreements. Law attorney plan, facility regulations, and four more study. Number number four, twenty nine two, the work made in the minimum contract actually with Sandra Cole files and include additional plays. Two oh five minus seventy five. Sandra Cole files with infrastructure and free vehicles to perform the study. So that and Lewis Williams on day represented from free vehicles. Providing us an update to the board on where we stand with the form of activity further. So this kind of what can we come forward with there?
Thank you, Trey, thanks for freezing that. Don't worry, it was good to be leaving. Right, perfect, thank you. Um, I think you all have a copy of this slide in front of you, um, because this ten or twelve times, so. Uh, at any point, if you have any questions, I'm going to say that's kind of, I'm going to ask you along the way. Now, what I'll do is just give you a quick update on evaluation, uh, that we've done. There we go, okay. So, um, so real quickly, um, you know, quick background, you know, small water infrastructure, this is the full valuation of about four utility evaluation of the funding mechanism. As far as, you know, question we often get is what are we talking about and needing to take care of? So, you know, of course, any, we talk about is, you know, there's roadways, there's water, there's wastewater systems. And don't layer with those, if you don't take care of those roadways, get pothole, get the creative roadways, you don't take care of your water system. You know, you have water main graves and like, it's similar for, whether it's creeks, channel, vardishes, pipe systems, like. Uh, they need to be maintained as well. If it's an infrastructure that has a purpose, um, that needs to be maintained, it'd be the stewards of the infrastructure. So typically, when you're focused on this smaller infrastructure, take care of this, providing flood protection to the community. A road protection along the creeks, protect infrastructure, protect structure, and like, a waterfall protection. And making sure that the waterways are not being polluted by the water. In North Carolina, um, many cities have chosen to adopt what's called a smaller utility fee. As a means to provide reliable dedicated funding, um, to provide that smaller infrastructure, um, maintenance management expenses. And that specifically authorized in North Carolina by state law. Sort of a quick reference, the citation there on the right, um, it's, uh, you know, it is a revenue, um, the funding mechanism is a service fee. That is limited to only smaller related costs. Um, and activities, they give an example of monthly rates for different cities, uh, they're in the table. Uh, where a typical household, I believe, basically, fairly good range, certainly two dollars to sixteen, typically in the three to eight dollar a month range is pretty typical, um. There's a variety of ways to go about how to set up that, I won't go into all the details here, but in essence. Um, the, the, the most common approach is what's called impervious area, I'll describe that in just a second. But my type of water, you've got a water meter that measures the use of, um, water for each property. Uh, for stormwater, measuring the impervious area is the most common approach to that. I'm going to, um, skip to the next slide and explain what is impervious area. It simply is the hard surface, rooftop, pavement, and like, they keep stormwater infiltrated into the ground. And so it results in more runoff that the town needs to manage and maintain. Uh, so it's increased quantity of flow, increased velocity of flow, that causes more flooding, all this more, uh, pre-erosion, the like, and water quality. So, the impervious area is really the most common measurement. Excuse me, of a property's use or contribution to this one. So an example of that would be, you know, this house here, you see the rooftop. Um, and that's about, for this property, about twenty four hundred square feet, so that's not the twenty four, what we call a twenty four hundred square foot house, right? That's not the living area of the house, that's rooftop, the garage, the overhead hangings, everything. So that may be an eighteen hundred square foot living area of the house, you know, that's twenty four hundred square feet of impervious area for the roof. The driveway is another one hundred fifty square feet, patios, additional small amount, even the walkway, and that all adds up. To, on average, in Silver City, thirty one hundred square feet of impervious area for your typical residence inside of it. Okay, we call that an equivalent residential unit, uh, so think of that as a unit measure, like water money measured in per gallon and gallons. For stormwater, you measure typically in E R, uh, for the one residential. I'll explain why here on the next slide. Thank you. There we go. Um, whereas for residences, there's a pretty small range of size for commercial properties or non-commercial properties, there's a very big range. Um, and so this example here shows, you know, a property with sort of a gas station, so you see. The, the storefront itself on the far left, you see the, um, the covering for the fueling stations or the, you see all the pavement with that. That adds up to fifty five thousand eight hundred square feet of impervious area, which is equivalent of eighteen houses or, or eighteen E R U. Uh, that matters because what we normally recommend to be equitable is to charge on a per area basis. This contributes eighteen times, you know, runoff to the system relative to a single house, so it would pay eighteen times. So, simply, the example here would be, on the left, if, many cities, about half the cities have what we call a flat rate residential, that every single family residence. Has the same fee, so five dollars a month, be an example here. And with every non-residential property, we normally include apartment complexes in the life with, uh, that non-residential classification. Um, at five dollars per E R U per month. So, to go a little bit further, multi-family apartments, that doesn't mean five dollars per apartment unit, it means five dollars per E R U. That amount of impervious area, in that case, divided up amongst department units. Um, and typically ends up coming at, uh, a rate well less than five dollars per. So, it's a little hard to, to say, but in town, you will see impervious area in blue, or the non-residential in the green, uh, or the residential properties throughout the house. So that's the inventory of the basis for your current charge. If you were to put in a, a small utility fee as a basis to how to take care of your form, that's the usage, uh, system throughout the town right now. Okay, uh, so, real quickly, um, with all that impervious area that's identified. Um, that's the unit cost, uh, evaluation here, that for every dollar a month that you charge to the full residence. Uh, that would generate about twenty three thousand dollars for the annual revenue. Very dollar you charge the non-residential property for E R U, that would generate about sixty nine thousand dollars. So, every dollar for E R U that you charge, you generate about ninety seven thousand dollars per year for your storm system damage. So to get you a little bit more specific idea of ranges, anywhere from a dollar, which is really lower than just about anybody, um, in North Carolina. At that three to eight in the middle is, it's the typical range, but there are some that are higher. You can see, on average, you know, the approximation of three dollars a month per year you. Um, would generate about two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, eight dollars a month would generate around six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, that goes directly to taking care of, of operating maintenance, capital improvements, all that's relatively managed, that's necessary for every construction. You can see the, the, while you've got more residential properties in town, the use of the, of the contribution of part of the system predominantly from the corporate side. So the, so the relative amount of, uh, you know, the, uh, set of the more on the corporate side of the. So, uh, if you were to, to go forward with the, um, development of a storm utility, there are a few things that need to be done. Um, to be able to, that's a really state law, uh, for it. And, uh, you want to make sure that you're setting it up in a way that is based off of the property back contribution, the system, and you're actually, um, paying for services. Um, larger in the town than necessary. So, one, right up top, the terminal impervious area, um, to, to get a, a more specific assessment of the accurate amount of impervious area as a unit basis for the charge. For each non-residential property, there's a significant range there. Um, second is, the, the basis for that comes from, as you saw, that aerial living tree. Um, that's in your particle information, that's associated that to the proper utility bill. There's some, you know, efforts necessary to make sure you're charging the proper utility account, frankly. Uh, that's right, or if you're getting a flat rate residential, but for a property, um, you want to make sure you're charging it once. You know, not charging the same fee multiple times, you know, not doing the charging, and making sure you're charging the proper account relative to the property. Uh, help outreach for education awareness, know, uh, what the services that are being provided by the town. Um, what the, uh, fee impact could be to them, and what the benefit could be for, uh, the payment of that fee. Um, again, but, you know, there would be, was voted there, document twenty twenty two, the ordinance, and these federal, that would be an action that would be necessary. Uh, at some point by the board to actually implement a document, uh, supporting it. Um, and then, to make sure that they, um, you know, accurate on an ongoing basis, processes, um, for the town staff to administer the program. So if new developments coming in to bring in the property fees, assignment of property, the property change ownership, where we build on the curve, to make sure the property is charged. And there are any appeals for incorrect charges, to have a process in place to correct those, um, you know, of, of proper methods as well. Uh, and the last is, you know, once everything is set up, we can begin to set up out of the fees on utility bills, the most common approach for that. Again, line item, water, wastewater, garbage, uh, typically the smaller line item on there, and to begin implementation of the services, uh, will reach more programs. That. If I have any questions.
So what types of things, what areas we use the, the money generated, the, for the town, what areas did it benefit?
Yes, anything stormwater related, anything that, that, um, for stormwater management, so it can be, you know, maintenance activities. Uh, where they clean out, uh, vardishes, uh, and something like that. Uh, the varnish, you know, the swell on the side of the road, you know, if you don't have curb and gutter. Um, maybe, uh, clean out the entrance, inflate them, uh, you know, capital improvements, if you've got under tied. Storm system, we've got flooding scenarios to, you know, upgrade that, reduce flooding issues. Um, it's common to, you know, use it for water quality protection, uh, means to use it for, uh, protection where you've got stream bank erosion. Uh, and starting in infrastructures, uh, whether super lines or, you know, uh, facilities.
If you have a park, six block, can you use it for that?
Yeah, if there's a smaller way to accomplish it, yes.
Okay, neighborhood businesses, if love.
Yeah, in neighborhoods, uh, ditches that are, uh, overflow and trash, and we can, we can get, we can purchase quickly, absolutely to remove that.
So can, can, a lot of times, the area flooding, the, the cause comes from another related area, can you use it to address the cause?
Yes, sir.
Not just the effect.
And the, same, the infrastructure, um, around ion, that we can, you know, to mitigate ion. Yes, so, you definitely, yeah, so as far as, you know, so now, we'll be careful here a little bit, but, so, you know, ion, I have related to the wastewater system, stormwater. You know, causing the impact water based first. Yeah, so, um, you, you can, you know, use that to keep stormwater from causing impacts to, you know, infrastructure. So, it's not as common to use it on, like, say, replacement of wastewater lines, you've got to dedicate a public back to do that. Um, but, uh, but if it's smaller related, yeah. Yeah, um, do, do grant applications take into account whether we have these fees in place or not? So, most ways that a grant application might come into play is that a lot of cities will have this dedicated funding mechanism, because a grant will often require a match. And so this is the way to turn one dollar into three dollars, one dollar, this, this provides a funding management.
Is the same true of, of a low interest loan, would they look to see if we need to set up a stormwater management system and thing?
You know, I can't speak to, uh, if there's anything that require that, um, really, what, you know, low interest loan, what we see is. Something related to, you have what we call an asset management program, you have a program to take care of your infrastructure, and this is really one of the key.
So it would help all of the, and help us get grants.
Yes. And so, um, if you go back to that last slide, you were talking about the steps to, uh, to implement, implement. What, what have you all done so far? Yes, so what we did was provide kind of conceptual overview, um, you know, what is the impervious utility would look like in, uh, Silver City. So, you know, we, we would need to identify the specific charges, um, you know, specific services if you want to, you know, provide for it. Um, and, uh, so really, we're at that stage of saying, the, the key was to identify, you know, we want to add, or we want to support impervious utility for challenges that you can. What, you know, revenue would it generate to get a deal for, you know, the, the impact of, uh, typical. So we're just at the very beginning of this. I, I wouldn't say you're at the very beginning, but, but you have to step to go.
Do you have any specific recommendations, uh, for the town that we should pursue?
So, but, all right, I'll tell you what, the, the recommendation I would say is that have their, there is kind of a single. Say that we helped for them as more utility in the last twenty five years that has decided we're going to remove it. Uh, it's, it's only been to, in the community, once they see the benefit of what's happening for the relatively, you know, every, every dollar matters, right? Uh, but to see for, for the contribution of going to that, the benefit they're getting from it, um, they're seeing that, okay, this is a value. And what typically happens with stormwater, I used to, I had the chart, the chart that, you can sort it out, I'll do the chart back, and so. Time going here, you have a big flood event, right, you know, a big storm, and that's right after that, there's a big, we need to do something about our flooding, there are storm waters. And so after that, you see the follow on fee, the, let's dedicate some funding to it, right? But after that, the reactive, it's the most expensive way to do it. Uh, so it's always facing that. What more it truly does is that this steady state approach, you know, been there, to stay in the top now, it makes you better towards, you know, of your finances, and better towards of your infrastructure. Uh, how I take care of your car, instead of waiting for the end to lock the crack, you're changing the alloy, you're doing your tune ups, you know, things like that.
So you recommend we proceed with those action steps?
Yes, sir, I, yeah, I would, I would say, just from a standpoint of being a good steward of forms, you know, infrastructure, that this is a very sound approach.
Well, really, I understand. You, I understand.
How's it implemented?
Yeah.
Well, so the, the, the next step would be, um, to identify what the, you know, what, let me think of that. One is identify what service we specifically want to pay for with this revenue. If we're going to, you know, if we want to pay, we wanted to pay for staff, or operations, or maintenance, right? We would pay for capital. We will pay for capital improvements to, to, you know, address some known issues throughout that. And from that, identify, okay, to pay for those services, what would be the commercial fee that would go with that? And then to go to the next, what needs are established in the forums in the P schedule. They all, you know, present that to public, have a vote on it. And if you approve that, then it would be a matter of implementing it, putting it on the utility bill.
But how does everyone feel? The people that they left in the past, who have near.
Oh, how do you help them? Sure, so by, you know, minimizing flood issues right now. By minimizing road issues for those of long creeks or any infrastructure of long creeks. And by protecting the water quality from stormwater runoff. So if you get water quality mandates to protect water quality, this is one of the mechanisms that help you be able to do that.
So you all have engineers coming in? Yeah. If it's not, then you all have engineers coming in?
Yes, so, so if you have identified the specific issues you are, you know, studying, you know, identified specific issues and what those solutions would be. Yeah, that would be recommended, you know, to do that, I don't know, problem areas, what areas that, you know, with new development that will be an issue to make sure that those are. Yes.
So I want to touch on the water quality protection issue for a second.
Okay.
Uh, because we still don't get a lot of pushback whenever we try to expand water services and wastewater services for town residents. All the, the basis and argument that we're adversely affecting water quality and we're, that we're not too many contaminants in the water. So I know it's collateral related, but could this help with that situation, with that pushback? And so could then we see a collateral benefit being able to provide better water and wastewater services?
Yeah, I think particularly the water, the wastewater side of things, that that's, that, you know, permitted dip charge, right? That we're required, right, it's not automatic. And there are very tight, you know, restrictions on what can be discharged from the system. And that gets more and more expensive for the less than that between that. From a stormwater standpoint, it's all non point source, you know, runoff on the roads, you know, parking lots, everything. That pollution as well. From a stormwater standpoint, there's a lot lower cost to treat a larger amount of pollution. So there's, it's a lower cost approach, you have a bigger difference on water quality in the near term. So it's.
So, yes, I mean, so we see a lot of, we see a lot of runoff and a lot of scrap that then dumps into rock river below and wastewater treatment. So this is something if we're able to mitigate some of this, then that, that helps us with our, with our discharge and the limits that were there placed upon us by the state.
That's right, okay, yeah, that's right.
Also, well, with the different communities that have flooding.
With, within the town, right, yes. And then the job of progression of where you want that way.
We, we've got, yes, several, land south, Ludford Bank, Washington. Paul Raxton, now flooding.
A lot of neighborhoods.
A lot of neighborhoods and then there's just south of the, just west, southwest of the downtown area, below the railroad track, all those places.
A lot of, a lot of economic risks.
Hold up chair for it too. Above that.
This would be a big effort just to.
And so you, if, so your recommendation to distribute the cost equitably would be the ERU basis?
Yes, sir. You, based on this, do you have a plan that you propose timeline and mine for all these, for these steps to be completed? So you, you could go, you know, you know, quickly, if you decided you want to go forward. I mean, other than the process, you know, from a technical standpoint, you could get this in place very quickly. From a standpoint of adopting your ordinance, you've got your process, I would say within the next couple of months, you know, that, that's going to be.
And I just want to get back to something that Bill rolled up on the, the grants that are available to help towns like us. If we have one of these programs in place, what type of grants have you seen in other towns that are similar to ours?
Yes, so, you know, through PA, you know, go to DQ, you got. Yeah, the Environmental Protection Agency has water quality grants, FEMA, there's blood protection grants that are available. And those have depending on the different brand, they've got different, you know, requirements for what they call local participation. So some of them are fifty fifty, that for every dollar, the, you know, FEMA puts in, the community has to spend a dollar. Some are seventy five, twenty five, that for every dollar, community puts in, the federal agency or its state representative will put in the three dollars.
So you could tell or trip along?
Yes.
You know, with the various projects, you know, things.
And have you identified, have you been engaged, identifies specific products? So we've got a spring evaluation that I, I wouldn't, I'm going to say that, that you've got your whole list of projects identified, but that's something we want to do.
Yeah, we need a prioritized list when you go down the shore.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you. In transition between five, one, one, five, when you all add another recent question about brand. This is a reminder, we do have a five hundred thousand dollar bounty grant that we've been awarded. Because the AIA that will study the stormwater system and identify project fees. So we have, it's all that'll be doing with that piece, so we're.
So we have a grant that's under fire right now?
Granted, it's about the full thing, but.
Wow, that the man?
Yes, sir.
What's a local manager?
If, uh, if we do, then the greater cost of applying for the grant, so a few thousand dollars is already paid.
Yes.
Purple album.
And if we, so we don't proceed, we do as well.
Right.
Well, I asked Hank to sit me on the agenda and speak towards stormwater, or the stormwater fees being imposed. And perhaps some of the things that were mentioned in my, uh, when I took office twelve years ago as commissioner. All my guys, principals, I try to keep the supply, see everything that's done, it's to do what is of best interest. All citizens when I vote. And I think to the largest extent, we've done it, and we're proud of it. But when you get to the stormwater, we oppose it or whatever. Uh, I think we're missing the mark. And the reason I think we're missing the mark is not enough transparency in the development of this whole. There's not happening to give the right, um, to citizens. We, we, whether it's like not, we got information that had heard tonight and it's on, and it's on, we're getting, we're headed on. Just vote, so that's the case of one. And if you look at the proposed vote, if you got one of the priorities before, uh, before, before starting. You look on it, priority number four, which promotes trust and citizen participation. That one of the major things that the state is writing in, or number four. This has not been made in years, a whole lot of stuff just come up at the last minute. Popped it out there, yellow. There's a lot of unanswered questions about exactly what this proposed fee is done. Well, I've, I've been asked a lot of questions, other commissioners have been asked a lot of questions. And we can't answer, so we don't have the information. Some of the things in, in, that, that have made a stab at it not, you know, what is the definition of an imperfect circle? Well, we've seen some of that tonight, wood, concrete, sidewalk. There's also your outbuildings, there's also your gravel drives, gravel roads, anything that, uh, work, you know, can't see through. And some of us obvious, but it's not, the definition is not out, we don't really know if it's a subject. Second question, we talked about ERUs, which in the circles area. It's pretty easy to figure out the home base that the area's ERU for a home is thirty one hundred forty two. Okay, that, that's pretty straightforward, that's one of the things, we do know that for sure. But then the next question of the, is our business community. That the divisions, there's the building, which has some wood, some of them have shed booths, you know, store built on. And just about every apartment has a parking, and some is ripped, some a whole lot more than others. And some of our business community, that's their main thing, uh, you know. Have a huge part, want to display whatever wear that they have or play that they themselves. And the question that the end, the end has not been answered yet, right? What did town vote as divisions like that, our divisions want to have to pay, you know, fees. And the answer I've got so far is, well, we don't know, because that has to be specifically done. Okay, that's the case. So again, if you have heard, how do we send a bill out to everybody? We don't even know which, I don't know, ERU, well, send a vote to do that. But if you let me finish speaking, you can talk when I get done. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to send out, we have no idea what we're going to talk, but we don't know what ERU. Now, I understand, and you actually heard that from the consulting group. They don't know, they have an idea for the art, and they have, they haven't come up with a city yet. All we know for sure is the house, that's all we're done, thirty one hundred forty two. We have no idea, that has to be done. And so they said that's two or three months down the road, okay? Two or three months down the road. Well, all right. With that said, in our budget, we have projected that, uh, these ERU fees or stormwater fees are going to generate right at five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. That's what's in the budget, just for the stormwater. My question is, have we arrived at that? We don't even know what we're charging, so where do we get that fee? Not enough, not had, had, that happened, that happened in a, in one. Second part of that is, what was five hundred thousand dollars to spend? Heard a little bit, that's been called off, you know, apparently it's not really spelled out anywhere. Now, in conjunction with that, uh, one of the other, and this is totally separate, right? There's also going to be a waste, so, I mean, it's three dollars per, okay? And that fee would be, uh, I think it's going to generate a hundred sixty three thousand dollars. And, you know, you, that's what's going to be. But if you take both of these, those fees to get, so six hundred thousand dollars in proposed revenue. We've got now, uh, up to, we started talking about these fees. These, the expenditure of the money that's provided to take care of this, both these fees came out of the general fund. Which was funded by tax rate, property tax, okay? So, right, we're going to generate all this money from fees. I haven't seen anything about how much I taxed it for that. So we're taking that money out of the general budget. And one thing, why do you keep coming up, being said, we're not having a tax increase, this isn't a tax increase, this is a fee. Well, if we're not reducing the tax rate, where this money used to go from, potentially having a tax rate. It goes anywhere in there, it doesn't say that it's gone down and don't know which, the, uh. That's the question we need to answer. All right. One of the things that continually comes up when we're doing these things, the town wants to pattern sales against other communities in our area. They're doing similar things, we try to follow in line. This is something that hasn't been done. I did a little bit of research, so, town of Apex, which is just down the road, a little bit bigger than us, a couple of years ago. They looked into this same thing, stormwater. And they went about it in an entirely different way. They saw the benefit of, of, you know, what it can do long term. But they gathered information, pulled it together, put it on, put it on their website, and you can look all this up, on the town of Apex website. Then they had a series of community meetings where they, you know, photo like what we're doing with the community meeting now. Went to the citizens, outlined what it is, pretty much what consultant said tonight, but on an individual basis, without any community. They did this, and they did all of this before they enacted the fee or even voted to do it. And then even after that, they waited a full year before they implemented the fee, before it actually went into phase. But what they actually did was gain support, talk to the citizens, got their feedback, and adjusted what they were given to that. And you can look all that up on the website, that's where I got it, that's, that's where you, and, uh. The map sometimes where your property is, how many ERUs your property has, whether it be residential, or whether it be commercial, or whatever it is, it's all right there. You can pull it up, see what it is, you can figure what your cost would be for the stormwater fee. So, that said, is somebody knows, I don't know, I don't have a vote. I can't make a motion, anything like that, I do have a recommendation. I recommend remove the stormwater fee from the proposed budget now. And until some of these concerns get brought up, and it can be more transparent, brought to the community and looked at. We like to say that we're going to vote with citizens, you know, involved, that we got this, we don't want to participate in some of these. I say we do that. Second thing I want to end, end of minutes, and I think it's going to be the odds. I cannot support this budget to this end here the way that it is written. That doesn't mean it can't be modified, but I could not recommend this stormwater fee as it is written and as it is.
So, um, question, I think, the, the, what I asked, um, the, the phrase in the end was, were we ready to, you know, to implement this? And I asked for a timeline, but we, we are not, we have to adopt an ordinance. Part of it is conduct public gathering, we haven't, we're not ready to implement this and split it into bills. I mean, that's, that's my, that's my understanding. Is that, is that the rest of the board's understanding?
That's my understanding, my understanding was the very beginning of this process.
That's my understanding. My understanding was the very beginning of this process. Uh, so I think that the transparency issue for where we all, is our second meeting, we have a packed house. It was pretty transparent. And we're at the beginning stages of this where we're just conducting research. We're determining impervious surfaces. We're going to conduct public outreach. We're going to see what is the, how we can be the best stewards of, of the town's money. Uh, for me, if we have an opportunity to turn one dollar or three or four. I think we should look at it. Uh, we have a grant that's going to help take forward. We've already voted to allocate over two hundred and five thousand dollars to it. Uh, there are the experts in the area. And all they're really proposing right now on their necessary steps for information. Is further research, further determination. Given that we have a grant, given that we have an opportunity to get few grants in future. To double or triple our money, I think we should look into that.
I don't think we're ready to implement this all.
But I think we should.
What, what is, what is, is he intend to, um, implement this immediately or what, what are, what are we?
And, and that would never implement immediately, but it was implemented as the program was ready to do it. The, the budget revenues and the penetrations reflect the July one implementation thing. Because as we worked through this process, we didn't know how long this process would take. This is a fee rather than a tax. We need to be implemented at any time during the fiscal year. Right? We would make sure that revenues and expenditures match. So, it's the lay into the fiscal year to get started and reduce revenues. Obviously expenditures could be reduced in a reciprocal fashion. And so, so adopting the budget with or without the fee included. Would, would not pay the optimal program without needing to implement it in a more fair.
And could we conduct a multi-pronged public outreach to make sure we get sufficient public input? And after we go up to, to whatever public outreach mission is still in progress.
If it's going to break the budget, I'm not on just the movement. And then go on with public input sessions, not only natural. And all of them.
It, it affects the budget from the standpoint of us being able to plan and make orders. That we've already talked about in a bunch of work sessions. So, we've had four work sessions, we presented the budget. We've also had three community engagement forums, probably for expect, we've had all cheese and people here. They have all cheese comments, they just did though. Yeah. The, the major factor for this first year, and there isn't an ideal time to start this one program. It always is a, a complicated process of trying to identify projects, identify what the operational need is. One of the biggest hurdles for the first year, and what we talked about in our budget work session, was a leak back in truck. With the way parts are and difficulty getting materials. We wanted to go in and have it in the budget because to perform and free all that, the place to order on that truck, that money has to be there. However, that's for the whole fiscal year. And we can't order unless we know the revenues and the budget. On the other hand, the capital project piece would be what the revenues would be reduced by. If we delay the implementation into the fiscal year. That's why I can say it's not going to impact the budget because we just reduce. The available dollars for capital projects that are going to the year. Because the budget doesn't work on a cash basis. It works on a different, cruel and logical basis to do the health of, that's why you do that.
One thing, um, I know you mentioned that, uh, we've had a community engagement meeting. And people have had an opportunity. But this is one particular thing that has not been on anyone's agenda. And so therefore, not everybody has heard this presentation or any information regarding. So, I think, uh, giving people the opportunity to make money. And to, to really look at that something that's important. And I don't think we, we can make a sound decision without hearing the public.
But are you saying don't want them to investigate it because bullet points and things?
I, I, I want them to investigate it, yes. Because it needs to be, us to look at how the town does flood. But I think we still need to make sure that everybody is aware and knows what's what.
Well, that's why we'll do the investigation.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was sitting here and asking about the timeline here. Because we don't have a timeline for this. We don't have a, a timeline for the implementation. We don't have a timeline for the public outreach. All, all of these bullet points need to be accomplished, which, which is why I asked the question.
Yeah, and, and that was the reason why I said when I did it because. It's not been one of those things that's been on the agenda on the first two meetings that we had. And so, this is, this is the, um, um, with the community engagement. This has not been on anybody's agenda. Um, and so, when you, the, the, this is probably the first time some people have heard it. And I think that's, that's not giving them opportunity.
And I think that there is some merit in the stormwater fee. But now, as right next, we have not done our due diligence, have not been transparent. It's all kind of quick. And if you want to have it in there, you say, yeah, we're going to do it, but take the money out. Don't have it in there for, going to do this. Because it's in there, it'll get empty. Somehow or another, that's in the, we have, we have all, I know that. Take the money out, say, look at this storm, we're going to look at this stormwater proposal. We're not going to do anything to the fee, we're not going to do anything to the fee. Until we have the community engaged. Draw all his eyes across all his feet and get that information.
And is the money actually, everybody says take the money out of the budget. Is the money actually in the budget?
Yeah.
No, 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 it's a fee, so how we collect any of these, put it in the budget.
How, how it's like a fees will run without it.
And we can't implement it until there's ordinance, there'll be a public hearing, correct?
Correct, and a public input, so. Well, it's in the proposed budget, it's in, it's in the package right here. You look in there. Because you run, it's in, it's in. It's a live night in there. Four hundred and seven thousand dollars projected red. In the budget. So, it makes me think, if we have a vote on ours, then it'll be. So, why not take, why not take that out? I agree, we're, we're short of Clinton haters here, but yeah, we've, we've heard it, it needs to be implemented in the past. And what our, the consultant said essentially agrees with what I just, I said from our original plan. That needs to be done, it's been done in other cities, and even three of them. So, we're agreeing with that. Why rush now to do it and have this until we get to that point? And get the citizens' input into this process. We haven't had, because it's been received already. You said that it had promoted in the community, uh, meetings we had. There's not been any information for anybody to know because it hasn't been transparent enough for anybody to see it. There's things we heard tonight, keeping this bolt at her. So, I mean, the citizens.
Um, if we take, if we take the line out of the budget, can we do, when can we do a budget amendment in the year?
Yeah, okay, it's a, it's a fee, it can be adjusted at any point in time. The, 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 the impact would be our ability to. Probably get the really back in front in order to be, to begin at least. Whatever the timeline of delivery is, we all have that, that, that would be the impact. Other than, other than that, if it had no effect, we're not going to spend money until we receive it.
Once the last decade, if the budget can be approved, June or. So, we can have a special call meeting or just do the next budget workshop in the next bu, next, next meeting and.
We can manage with a budget amendment at any point.
Yeah.
So, so you're denying the calling to public hearing on budget. It's the last legal requirement you got to meet before you can go to a budget. So, you know, once, once that's done, you can follow it, I mean, the time you want to, you'll be like, you're like, you're.
But, but the fee line item is a separate issue of proceeding with the investigation of the stormwater program.
That's right, there is a separate issue.
Okay, so we can, we can, we can determine impervious surfaces. We can conduct public outreach, we can determine what the cost will be and what the benefit will be. Separate apart from any fee schedule. Just do all that in any of the fee schedules.
That's correct.
If the board determines at that time, that the cost benefit analysis favors a stormwater program.
The, the board is not immediately required to adopt a schedule review. The board is required to adopt a tax rate and budget. It's just good practice to adopt a schedule review here.
And if you, if I understand correctly, you've got a, a grant, go ahead and do some.
That, that's correct, so where is the grant, you know, where might they go for it?
I just waited, who's that?
We would have to award the grant. We have, we are not awarded the, the, uh, the project today.
Let's do that, you love to go out there.
And that, but that would be, that would be a long-term reservation because that's. That is a AIA, generally, you also do for water and sewer. So, those can be two or three year project. So, so we can still, uh, products that we know that we can do. But that's very different from having systemic and that all of your whole system. That you can have, they help with the several areas out like the road. Same thing with the sewer, this probably may not have an effect on the entire system, but the thing that we can basically concede.
Is the fellow from Freezing Nichols, what do you see when, when towns are getting ready to embark on this research? And looking at a stormwater program? What do you see as a typical timeline to do the research, fully investigated? Do the public outreach and then come to a conclusion? What's a typical timeframe that you see?
The, the, there's a couple of different paths from that. One of the keys, uh, for just to work on, take out the aspect of having a stakeholder committee. So, typically in the, you know, three to six month, you know, range would be the timeframe. Uh, the stakeholder committee, um, is something that has to do with public, you know, engagement. Uh, that typically you can take, you know, a more measured approach. Make sure that they have hears information, they, they digest information, they're able to provide feedback on, sleep on it a little bit, right? Provide their input. So, uh, we're working with Wake Forest right now. Uh, and they chose to do, uh, just remember, but here's additional, which is to have a prominent advisor. So, they've got, um, well, eight people, um, that come from business, from residential. You know, uh, you know, variety of backgrounds to meet, you know, meeting on a monthly basis for several months. To go through the different spots that they can and really represent the community, go back to the field. Uh, for this, that sometimes, you know, can take more time. Um, but it really gets to what, this is a, this is, you know, good healthy discussion that. We see as balanced staff, you know, that we're in different seasons, balanced throughout the country. They work with the system every day, so they understand the real needs and they're, you know, doing their best to go address those needs now. You know, as a board or a council, y'all are doing, you know, your, um, top role as well. Saying the policy aspect, we represent the community, you know, for that, that, that will be able to say.
When we, uh, several years back, we were embarking on a, a plan for Brent Park. What we're going to expand, what we're going to do. And we had multiple, multiple, we formed a committee, we had multiple. Community meetings, and we advertised those. Um, is that, it's something like that, but what we have is specialties. Right now, we're doing community meetings in each district. They're, they're kind of general meetings. But what we had for the, uh, rent department was meetings specifically designed. And we sent out surveys to the public to say, you know, what game we want to see in a rent department. So, can we do something like that? We have surveys, we have meetings. Uh, maybe we have a list of, well, these are, these are appropriate projects for stormwater usage fee. Is what we can send off. And can we get something sent out where we can get rankings? You know, public to determine what the input is on, on the public views as the biggest means for the town.
Absolutely, there are a variety of ways to do, to engage the community and, you know, which one would that, it's, again, so. Whether it's through online surveys, through, you know, stakeholder group, called town hall meetings. Some are targeted to different types, you know, the general community or target visiting community. We make sure that there is a question or answer, there's a variety of ways, yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, every option we discuss.
And then we have an option too, where people just didn't know, I think. Choose that as well. Correct?
Take a second.
I have a question to, to answer. We read every time that you mentioned tonight, and we had to do something, probably had to get a leaf collection book on. I know what you're talking about. But I'm in the circle, Andrew. If we don't, you know, we modify this stormwater fee tonight. And it delays the order of this leaf collection book. Uh, we've got two leaf collectors now that we've used for years. And in a key, why people just continue doing what they're doing, if we get some of this. Uh, sorted out, we go to, it sounds like that's what they're describing.
That, that is, uh. I mean, we, we certainly, the, the, the impact would be, the one to be able to have controllers be available. We work on stormwater projects, well, the benefit of the leaf truck was that it would be one that I'm ready. So, for me, true. So, it increases our efficiency by being able to take the same existing sand and, and make with multiple persons. We'll address a variety of issues. So, that, that's the major inventory, so. Now, it's, it's, it's up to the board to hopefully decide what they wish to approve in the budget. Uh, I'll just say since our second work session, we just, this is how it's been presented. So, it's not the news since we had the original presentation from pre-communicative discussion of stormwater. This is the timeline of what we discussed as far as what the funding needs to be. So, that, that, that nothing's changed on that. We've been consistently saying that timeline is the allocated.
Yeah, there's nothing new. You aren't correct with that, but, I mean, all that brought up. We didn't have any of these things, we didn't have, you know, anything. We didn't have a committee, how the ERU was anything. Yeah, we'll look at it, it'll come up later. But if we get anything, we can use what we got. We've used, and I'm not saying that the leaf truck's not a good idea. And since we're down the road, I think that's good. But I feel like we'd be in a rush to give a leaf for it. Just so we won't have something in the budget for it. And forego the transparency, you know, all those other things that we need to do. So, I don't get any part of it. You have a question, Tommy?
So, is, uh, what do you need from the board? Consensus, a motion on the, the stormwater necessary implementation steps? What, what is needed?
So, the board isn't being asked in the agenda to take action on the budget. Like, like it's a public hearing on budget.
And I'm talking about, about the woman.
Five point one, not two, they'll just set it up. Right, I would, I wouldn't say there's anything to take action on in five point one. Uh, that's just another information on the board from the pre-communicative. On, on five point two, to, to Mayor Pike's discussion. Uh, that would be up to the board to decide whether you, how you wish to continue to pursue stormwater. I mean, the budget, the budget been presented, it was presented at the last meeting. It's, it's a completed document. If the board wishes to choose now of breaking that the budget been presented. It's probably in the voice, uh, board to decide any change that we just made.
Well, I mean, we're not at, we're not at six point two yet, we're, we're at five point two.
That's right.
I, firstly, we'd like to see us investigated further. There's an opportunity to double, triple, quadruple our money through grants to, for the benefit of the town. I, I do agree that that whole three, conduct public outreach needs to be done. As we've done. I, I do agree that that whole three, conduct public outreach needs to be done, as we've done in, in many other forms and fashions. We have an opportunity to take a dollar, turn it forward, we need to live that, and when we did students, they're going to money.
And down the road as much as we can.
Um, I think, so I would, and I understand that these are separate issues. Uh, the, the budget and the stormwater, but I would like us to proceed with investigating the stormwater.
That involves, I mean, it's like all, all seven bullet points, determine impurviance, the science side, the stick jar, conduct public outreach, um, the document organs, all seven of those have to be done, and you need to have a project when you do it.
Or, or do you want to leave it in the vote, so it's, um?
No, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I want to, I want to see, I mean, I want to see that, that, that was covered in the comment.
And, and it's not, they were saying that the stormwater project is, is not a point, that's what he is. And being personally affected by it, but I think we, we do need to have as much, what is taken care of.
And I don't think we, we can't discuss an ordinance funding it until these are done, these, these, all these bullet points, the ordinance would be the last thing. Uh, so that's, you know, I'm, I'm compartmentalizing it. Stormwater budget and the line item could be the budget, so right now, I'm focusing on the stormwater puzzle, knowing that anytime an ordinance would be scheduled to be approved, many, many months down the road, but if we don't do the investigation, we never get to that point, so I think we should investigate it. I think we should keep moving down the road.
Staff members willing to do whatever is necessary to provide the board with sufficient information to build support and, and novel program. Uh, and I mentioned the community board earlier, I didn't even have a detailed discussion of stormwater, all, all I meant was, you know, at least during my time here, I think we tried to reach out and be direct, and educating the public and reaching out to them on a variety of issues. And that was just submitted, I wish we tried to do that, I don't think we've done anything with all this information, we've had public forums and full budget work sessions where this is then, uh, open to the public to be able to be available and hear the discussion on stormwater and any other issue, so if, if the board has a method or outreach or hearing, that, that you wish for us to mark all of it, we're not happy to.
Well, I think the, the current meetings that we're going for district is good, but, uh, we do have a template that I mentioned earlier, we used with the red department, that, that produced a lot of, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of input, uh, we could look at that template. But I, you know, it's a first bullet point here, determine impurviance areas. Obviously, when you're determining it, you're defining it, uh, I know we're at the beginning stage, but I don't want to just well, this, this potential. Too many parts of our town are adversely affected by the stormwater. Too many neighborhoods, too many businesses, and it's just going to get worse over time. Uh, it tears up our roads, it gives a permanent gutter, tears up our ditches, which causes flooding in yards, flooding the businesses, but we just got.
Mom and Mary stations down, down river and.
And it, then it affects our, our water, you know, clean water, our water quality, we get ding for that, it's just like this, it's just the snowball is getting bigger and bigger as it goes down. So this can be a piece of the puzzle to, uh, help the town with those issues that I want to look into it. That's, that's my, that's my perspective.
How can we modify what we had to say, we're going to investigate, we all think Louis will talk about all things Freezing Nick called that, instead of just say, how can we do that, yet, won't have a fee in there, to get that, what we have, what would we need to do now to get that in?
Well, I think because of the fee and our taxes, there's money that I should be collecting.
Well, it's still in the budget, I, I think it needs to come, how, the money part, when we can put the O in there, that we're going to do all this, then we'll talk about.
So where I'm going with this, I hear the anxiety, because there's a, it's, it's a line item in there. So if we had to collect the money, and it's not in there, it was kind of like kind of like if I make a motion for it, on an issue, that's not going to be heard for six months. The judge is just going to say, well, you're spending on point sticks, we don't relate that, we're going to put that in the hand when it's in December. I'll rule on other options now, so I think that's kind of analogous situation, we don't necessarily have to rule on a thing, we can, we can slide that out, put that back in later. I think that'll go to some comfort, I think it's a good compromised position, move forward, but it gives people comfort, do have some angst about the being in there, because we don't have that much.
We can't, for, for staff to move forward.
But, but we.
Implement it so an ordinance.
But it was probably reading the budget, it's not, it's not on the table. There's some act.
It was in here five dollars.
So we could, we could remove that angst and still investigate stormwater, probably, I mean, we can do that. Well, it would be better, you know, for something. We, we're always admitting our concern, you know?
That, if that was the board, we can just just.
Is there any?
Well, I'll make that motion.
Is there any adverse effects to town, what we're talking about?
The, the, the only impact would be the overall, it would have a lot of impact.
All right, I'll make that motion.
That's, well, do we do that motion now, or we wait until you propose a community?
I would, if you want to hear your vote in public before.
Okay.
So right now, we just need consensus on five point two.
Wait, wait, it's a pretty awesome.
We have, um, we have the most, and we act the other side, and we got some, uh, control, and we're going way there, so.
We have to, probably not make a problem.
Well, that's a problem, yeah, that's all I would say, and we can, like, we certainly, after the public hearing.
All right.
Now, can we?
Yes, sir.
Can I, well, and people will do it.
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're done with section five, and.
One, six, yeah. All right, we're on the vote here. Hey, just time, we're looking at the period, and we're working with another question, continue to, all that we continue, I can reopen the vote here, six point one, this is kind of cool.
And the continuation of the public hearing that was opened by Tom Conville on Mayor First. At that time, um, council directed staff, um, to address three points and gave us three workouts. Um, the first one was to change the regulation to apply to pools, um, that had a depth of playing board inches and above. Um, that can see and say, under recommendation five, um, that has been changed by staff. Um, the second I know that was requested by, um, Commissioner Bray, was the inventory of a number of pools um, currently in existence that would not be the new standard, give this ordinance adopted. Um, if you look in your packet, I believe it's page fifty seven, um, code enforcement did provide staff with a spreadsheet showing how many items, how many swimming pools, um, will be out of compliance with the, with the changes. Um, at the time, at this time, there are only three that would, that have been identified as not in.
I actually drove out, looked at them today, so there's enough, I didn't see anything in five twelve, just described. Uh, but there was a pool, kind of on, on four twenty three garden, it's not a permanent structure, it's kind of a, edge of the house, so part of it was in front, one part was in the back. Uh, Dixie Drive, that was kind of an odd setup, where you come down Dixie, when you're looking straight on at another home. It was hard to determine for me at least, what would be considered front side, back, uh, because you had a single wide that park over there, you know, the forest side of the wall, it was not a permanent structure. So I, it just depends on how you define front or is back, if I'm making the road and I'm looking straight ahead, if it's the back end or the single wide. But the, the front and back doors, the doors into the residence were actually on the side. So I don't, I mean, I don't know what your count is, the front and backyard, but, but, um, the load, it's not true, I didn't see it from there.
Well, you said one of nine, Dixie, and the, on the, on the candy, uh, lines, that they, they, does that mean protective barrier?
Yeah, um, and this part was done by the code enforcement officer, so, and I personally did not go out and look at them, so I, I really don't know how to address your concern, but yeah.
It's all concerns.
Okay. Um, but yeah, PD would be protected area, F would mean that we're behind a fence.
Is it a protected barrier sufficient, I mean, I don't know why I'm going to.
Yes, a protected barrier, as long as, it doesn't have to be a fence, as long as they have some kind of means of protecting it, as for, from anybody getting into that area.
Into this, oh, okay.
With, with the, uh, if we were to pass this ordinance tonight, would these that are highlighted, would they be grandfathered?
Yes, sir, that would be stash recommendation.
They wouldn't have to remove the structure?
Yes, um, the board can direct staff to go either way, either to allow them to be grandfathered, or, um, you know, say they would have to go and become into, and go into compliance, the staff is recommending them just.
Very well.
Do we do grandfather?
Yes, we do.
And, and the two that I saw were not permanent structures, I think the more seasonal type structure.
Oh, the last, the last request, um, as it came from New Commission of Wary, um, very badly, I'm sorry. Um, intervention about grounding jurisdiction, um, out of thirteen cities that, um, that looked at only five has swimming pool, um, apartment within their ordinance, um, at least in their U D O. And they're trying to provide, beginning on page fifty four.
Other than this, does we move away?
Yes, sir.
Those barriers, so, our package, our package, they're that case.
Oh, okay.
Is it still stash recommendation on the, um, twenty four?
Yes, sir.
And so moving forward, all pools would have to be in the backyard.
I think, you know, some of these probably need to be brought into compliance.
It's something, oh.
Yeah, but with these, I don't think, I don't think we need to grandfather, maybe we brought it into clients.
I'm a little concerned about the one of mine, Dixie. It's, the way that single wide is set up is actually at the furthest point, removed from the road. It's the least accessible to, you know, the kids, if you put it on the backyard, it's actually going to be more accessible to, you know, the kids coming and jumping in there. Um, the one at, in twenty three garden is, uh, will be a little problematic, because there's no protective barriers, it's kind of open.
Yep.
Circular, uh.
That's why I think, I think.
Not permanent structure.
Yeah, so I think, I think we need to.
That one to be moved.
Yeah, but then if you can grandfather one, and, so I think we can, they all need to be brought into compliance.
I mean, looking at that, they should be better now in the city. So they take, if, if, if a non-permanent structure is in the single, then they're no longer grandfathered, they couldn't re-put it back up in the same place next year?
Um, generally, the grandfathered, um, last, or if it's taken down, it is not um, redone within a year's time, it does lose its status.
But on seasonal issue, you, you would never go twelve months without putting it back up, that. So I think that can massage a little bit to where, you know, it's a because these seasonal pools, you're going to have them up for.
Well, they, they won't see them, because some were, were up through the entire year.
Yeah.
It's not the state statute, or grandfathered policy, anything, the board can say at a time, they say twenty one runs this month.
I, I mean, my, I, I think, my, my concern is that we, you know, we, we be consistent in how we do it, and I think, I think that having, you know, having all right compliance makes the most, uh, makes the most consistent.
I'm just more concerned, I'm just more concerned about the, with Dixon. Because they're going to, that's going to cause them to move it to the backyard, which is more accessible and less protected.
Regardless, you know, you know, the community environment is that, that's, that's, that's the most problematic to my.
No, that was an issue.
I don't think we gave that sign of the statement, we need to go on to.
All right. You want to play it? Oh, I have a question.
Okay.
I can remember that, if we and I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on the grandfather versus no grandfather. So how, how would we need to amend it? If we made it retroactive, uh, because you, you, you don't know, you've got to lay this out, and here that these blocks with these, that's going to be very hard. For how do we need to amend the language?
Um, there's an actual markup of the ordinance in, in the, um, your packet.
Yeah, it's a red.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, kind of sort of rich. And it's on my page eighteen.
We can, a thing that can be added that, um, these requirements go into that for all swimming pools current and future.
Some of this thing.
Yeah.
For building future, especially the median?
Yes.
What's the point, thoughts on retroactivity versus non-retroactive? What's the points, thoughts on retroactivity versus non-retroactive?
Retroactive.
I mean, to, to serve those two would not be grandfathered?
Yeah, I think we, I think that, you know, all, you know, all not, I think we could be add a statement in that, um, you know, all, all, uh, strictly non-compliance must be, must be brought into compliance, uh, by.
I'm sorry.
By, by July one. Because we're talking about here to safety issues.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you start, you know. This structure, I mean, grandfather something in, safety issue, yeah, we're not saying.
And I think that, I think the four twenty-two.
Yeah, yes. So, yeah, so, it, it, so, so I think the board, we can, we can approve, approve the, we could approve the tax amendment as presented with the stipulation that all, that it wants, all current, all current structure is not in compliance, must be brought into compliance, um, or removed by July one.
It's about Dixon, everybody want for you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, any other questions? Ready to close the public hearing? Public hearing is. I'm making a motion that we approve the tax amendment TA twenty-three thousand zero-one, this week calls as presented with the stipulation that all existing, existing structures not in compliance must be brought into compliance or removed by July one, twenty twenty-three. And we have a motion, we say, in this group. Any questions or comments in this group? Any none, the votes are voted, all of the favor, six thousand five, saying aye, all of the opposed, like aye. And the motion is here. All right. Moving on, go to. The second, the public hearing, six point two, proposed fiscal budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Right, the manager, right, on the two.
Uh, well, we presented the budget, so I, I wouldn't have any additional things to add, but I would just say without anyone having to find it off the speaker.
Okay. Uh, we have the person to sign up, um, is Sandy Dammert. If you come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Cindy Dammert, I live at one one oh eight oh US Highway fifty-four west, in the south of City, or Carolina two seven three four. Um, I am here with some concerns about South City and the board of commissioners and the town manager and staff. The citizens of South City, if you guys into office, I'm expecting you to provide growth, stability, and promote innovation into the center of South. This is an enormous undertaking, and I suggest you take it seriously, and you give it time it deserves. Starting with the budget. I implore each and every one of you to completely understand and know where each dollar is coming from and where each dollar is going. Don't spend it before you have it. If you don't understand anything in the budget, then collectively, you guys get together with each other, with the manager, and get your answers. Nothing should be decided after adoption. The town staff has been trying developing this proposal. You can put, and you guys have put in as much time to read and understand the citizens, the businesses. Um. Um, staff has given you time and put in time to develop this proposal, and you need to put in the time to see if it meets the citizens and the businesses' needs for progress. The direction this board takes determining the success of South City will be decided mainly on this budget. If there are items in the budget that are not clear, you make them clear before you vote. You've got to kill the third. Be strong enough to send it back to the town manager and his staff. Remember that if you are the decision maker. They are the answer to you, and you are to answer to the town.
Okay. Uh, we didn't have anybody else to sign up for the vote. Any session from the vote?
So we're good.
We're closing everything here. We're closing everything.
Well. No.
Yeah. What about, we talked about earlier, we have.
You're moving this.
Yeah. We got to do the. Yeah. We're voting for. Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we have the same night, you know? That little discussion, maybe you want.
Yeah, that's correct, to make sure that not to force.
You're probably on the same page. Uh, because we're planning the issues, we're removing the block on page eighteen and nineteen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. On clear. Clear down here. Ready to close the public hearing. Now declare the public hearing, six point two. All right. Hear anything else in the vote?
I'll make a motion. That we, we know the stormwater utility section, I'm going to be a fee schedule, page eighteen of nineteen. And we can continue on with the.
You can do that, I hope you have this.
Oh, yeah, the rest of the vote.
Okay, we got a motion, now seven, Michigan Austin. All right, need to break the discussion, and the question. Here none, all of the favor, six thousand five, saying aye, all of the opposed, like aye. Then, okay, let it, let it, let it, put that, that, all right. All right. Next. Well. Okay, six point three, um, what is here? What they picked?
This is a request submitted by Mark Ashness with the PD group. Um, Mr. Ashness is requesting a special impact allocation assignment for four parcels that are currently located within the Rocky River watershed, um, the Boundless watershed. In March six of twenty twenty-three. The town board for South City approved the resolution to receive eight hundred and seventy-four acres of watershed allocation from the South County. This allows the town to increase their, um, watershed allocation from point two four acres to eighty-seven point two four acres. Mr. Ashness with the question, uh, that the town board gives the watershed administrator the right to approve, um, fourteen acres of special impact allocation for, um, the Chatham side of City Mega Site and another seventy-two point three four acres for the mid-state families. This will allow the development, um, to proceed at the, at these sites um, beyond what is allowed in for the water. Are there any questions over that? I believe we do have some speakers in bed, some of the people on, we have at the front.
First speaker is, um, Bernard Nichols. If you would come, give your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, Hunter, that was three nine y'all, we're there, ready, three, four. Um, I have to say, the corporation, um, they did favor of approving the four parcels. Uh, we are actively chasing several customers that are looking to locate inside our city, and in order to so they bring these customers in, we have got to have the SIA approval.
I approve. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Connor Brooks, you know, the place, Scott Doorbrook, favorite, I'm from, I am a property owner. Uh, Jason, to, uh, some of these parcels that have been, uh, presented here tonight, especially twelve eight, it's twelve eight seventy-six, my land is adjacent to that, I'm connected to that land. And I stand just to give support of the SIA business.
Next up is Scott Harris. Give your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Scott Harris, uh, business owner here, Harris, real deal, office in South City. Uh, my address is fifty-four fifty-one, walking to the road, in San Francisco, Carolina, two seven three three, zero. Uh, just wanted to just give my support for this project, without this uh, special intensity allowance for this property to develop, and that particular property is practically, uh, just about, you know, can't do anything with it without this, so, and get some of the allowance there. So it's rail access, it will give access to the mid-state site, uh, to the rail. Uh, if this is approved as well, so, if you want your support for the project.
Thank you. That's all. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mark Ashness, I was from the applicants, I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything that comes up, I did not sign it, but see.
Any questions? Any questions to the board? Close it. And now we're ready to close the public hearing. Close the public hearing, six point three.
Making a motion, we approve the request of our watershed administrator to approve fourteen acres more or less of SIA, SIA, the town, South City Mega Site and seventy-two point three four acres more or less of SIA for the mid-state.
All right. Have a motion, we have a second, any questions? And now we're moving on to vote, all of the favor, six thousand five, saying aye, all of the opposed, like aye. And the motion is here.
Thank you.
All right, next. What will be? This is the kind of the culmination of the charter, uh, amendment. Except for a referendum, which would happen currently, but there's three things here that we can do is adopt the ordinance. That's number, I guess it's another. We put before you the law. And that changes the charter subject to successfully, uh, getting approved by the vote at the next one. And then, uh, adopt the, uh, resolution calling for a referendum. Probably plan to do that at two separate actions. And, uh, we asked them to approve the public notice.
No, I don't feel like they need to approve it, it just, I mean, I think the, uh, proof is a resolution that approves the notice.
Yeah. They can vote, or let's move reservation, sending a referendum. It should happen to me. Changes the mayor current four years, subject to file approved by the voters in the. This is on the, I haven't even talked about, yes.
So we, 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 so you're saying they've already been noticed, or we're gonna send out another?
No, this will be a, a public notice that the, that it'll be a referendum on the November seventh election, so that public notice will take place in October, so right before the election is when that, that notice would be, um, put out.
The motion, only ordinance, and then the motion on the next reservation, in the order up ahead.
So you can have as well?
I do two in one, yeah. Dan Redd, yes.
Making a motion that, uh, we approve the ordinance, many of the Charlie Towns, uh, city, this next term in four years, it approved by qualified voters in Towns, uh, City, at the one year election, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, question? Here none, we're gonna vote, all of the favor, six thousand five, saying aye, all of the opposed, like aye. The motion is here.
All right, I make a motion, we approve the resolution, approve the resolution calling for a referendum for the purpose of chartering the question of the mayor's turn at the regular election to be drawn on November seventh, twenty twenty.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, question? Here none, we're gonna vote, all of your favor, say aye, all of the opposed, like aye. The motion is here. That's, that's spent, that takes care of it. Yes. Okay. Moving on. Anything?
Thank you, Eric. Uh, do you want information on the board of committees? We were very pleased to blacken our next partner, Recreation Director, who had several interviews. And we got to wrap it with the scene, pop, uh, our director, Mr. Pop, I was, you know, laughing before. Uh, through all the committees. Uh, reminder, five to date thirty, on June the eighth, we have our employees particularly, Frank Park Pool, we have indoor, so we invite each of you to attend that event. And I'd like to thank, uh, Commissioner Brown for hosting the, uh, prayer community forum at Frank Three Church uh, on Wednesday, uh, we had pretty good attendance and had pretty robust discussion on a variety of issues, right? Fourth community forum will take place in August, then, uh, Mayor for Tampa is this Christmas four. We have worked very aggressively, you know, to draw up our vacant city, the WIS park, and we are now down to one control vac. Uh, moving our laws, but we've been very successful in that. Uh, Bray Park, she, she, Bray Pool has successfully opened, uh, opened, uh, Memorial Day weekend. And we have that absolutely stacked now, so thank you to Saff, and give her that opportunity all the time. Uh, full information, I have, you know, this, uh, Hispanic days, I've moved track the president office today, so I'm there in the process of relocating to the old Warren basketball, so. Also, I was, we were contacted by the county last week to tell us that we need to make a, a replacement on that, on our climate change committee. Uh, we were told that this was ground damage, but we moved everything to the land.
Climate change.
That's something to come up in the later term. Yes.
Whether they expect us to nominate a replacement?
That, that is, that is a strategy, I think, forward. But they told us we were received, so. Home notice that, that they, they just came by the office Friday, and all of that action, because they. But they told us we were receiving, so, formal notice that it was, they just came by the office Friday, and all of that, that action, because I, uh, I just want to get you most, love to date it, man.
All right, anything else?
That's all, Eric, thank you.
You have anybody come? Oh, damn, I'm sorry, I was a little, you know, it's all.
Oh, yeah.
You have his name. You have anybody come in? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, oh, wow. I know that there's protected areas over there, but the, the, it's like the trees have just. Gone everywhere, you can't see, you can't see anything, I guess, that he does, and it's, it just looks. If, uh, I don't know what's that man. So, you know, I was just wondering.
What, what if, Mr. American, Chris, come on, let me, let me. Ask boss to ref that hand trim some of that area so that we didn't affect some of the necessary water flow.
If I remember correctly, there, there is some species and things that they planted in there, the pollinators and stuff like that. And, uh, it, it could be whack bags, but, but there was, there were things that they can do, they, that's the drive they would do, it's. And what was the lady's name, and then, uh, she was with us, and they throw in the dentite marble, we, we've done that a few times.
That, that has been done since about, I don't know, about, that's it, did you know it's an environment that's sensitive areas, so I could ask that, that, look at that and speak for the expert, and see if there's anything.
And, uh, someone please correct me, but I'm on this discussion years and years ago, but I think one of the sticky wickets was that some of the, some of the foliage. Was actually, um, covered by that branch, and so there was some issue with cutting back certain, certain of the plants. That we could, um, somehow, I think the way it was presented to us is that we, we could color some, we should be cutting back and properly, that could repair that branch.
Being replayed, four keep not, I think, or a bank, lots of.
Something like that, but it's slowly fast tense, that would be very judicious to know they trimmed it.
Because as, as those trees mature, then the, the shade would, would take care of some of the.
So maybe it's kind of an issue to another judicious trimming.
Yep. And I think.
It, in a sense, it can be pretty, you know, dangerous, some of the ways, some of it is just. Just overly long.
I think the town manager, uh, is, somebody in the town staff knows what we did, doesn't it, and, uh, look, if we can look into the store and do, it would, if we permanently, uh, but when it permanently fall, this was, uh, it's still in compliance. So, I'm saying this, looking at, uh, the, 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 is, I would. Anything else? So, yeah, just have a motion to go in close set.
Make a motion under the close session, I'm seeing a lot of, especially one week, we're bringing two more.
Second, while others are there, I, the down the close session.